It's about six o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and open the workshop. This workshop is open to consider a proposal for property development by Mr. Wumble. Is Mr. Wumble present? Okay, before that, do I need to ask for a roll call?
No, sir, not on the workshop.
Okay.
You'll just ask for the staff report first.
Okay. One second. I'd like to have a staff report.
Sorry about that. Yes, we do have a staff report. Russell Brady, our contract planner, has a staff report, and I will turn it over to him for that.
Thank you, Russell Brady, presenting for staff the workshop for pre-application review 2015-195. Here showing the location of the site, located westerly of Bradley Road and southerly of Salt Creek. Here showing the general plan land use designation for the site. It is designated 8.1 to 14 residential, and the zoning for the site is R2. The pre-application review that was submitted and reviewed by staff proposed the preliminary review for the subdivision of approximately 15 acres for 207 condominium units with a community center and pool facility located west of Bradley Road there. Here showing the conceptual site plan. I'm not sure on your screens how easily it is to read at this scale, but just kind of show the northeast corner of the facility, just to show kind of the entrance here. Here's kind of the community center and pool that they've conceptually laid out here, and that would kind of be a generally was referred to as an alley-loaded product. So you'd have the front of the houses facing this way into kind of a green common area, and that the garages would be loaded via an alley on the back. So there's kind of this clustered across the site, this layout, and then there would be parking along the main drive aisles. So at this time, staff recommends the planning permission to conduct the workshop, as well as collect any feedback from the public attending. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers on this item, but the applicant is here, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Laurie Markham, 41635 Enterprise Circle, Temecula, representing Mr. Wumble. We're really here, we went, we received the comments from staff on the staff-level review, and we want, we have not designed a project yet. This is a prior design that had, that had been before the county, actually, at one time, and we know there will be some changes for the water quality management plan portion of things because it is new regulations. And also, when this was initially formulated, it had a pool complex, a major pool complex, that may not be viable given today's water regulations, so it might, it will probably be a different recreational amenity. We do have the comments from Public Works with regard to the access, and what we would like to do is after this, we will sit down with Public Works and discuss the access pointer points to make sure that we're compliant with what they would, they would like to see for the, for both our access and the surrounding access points. We're really here to get input from the Commissioners on what they would like to see in this particular area. We are bordered by Han Road, excuse me, Bradley Road in the front. There were some comments about having Bradley be a view fence from staff. That may not be possible due to acoustic considerations, or it might be partial, partial wall and partial view fence. I don't think we have any problems with view fencing along Salt Creek Channel, and that would be probably our intent. There was a, was a comment to contact flood control to see if we could tie into the, there's also a drainage channel on our westerly boundary to tie into that with regard to trail purposes, and we will certainly do that. We would certainly like to see that happen as well. Because we'd like to have eyes on those areas so they don't become attractive nuisances for, you know, potential problems for the residents. Actually, we'd like to get input from the Commission on what they would like to see as far as amenities. Right now, we have a central amenity recreation center pool complex. Would the Commission like to see that broken up into smaller sub-areas? There were comments from staff with regard to that, and what the Commission would like to see with regard to amenities. Barbecue areas, possible splash pads for the kids, you know, play areas. We would envision this as basically being starter home-type product, probably would have some, you know, some children, but probably smaller children as people transition out of apartments into these types of uses, and would probably, before they would go on to a larger home at some point in their ownership. So, as much input as the Commission's willing to provide to us, we'll certainly take into consideration as we start to work our way through the design process as part of the project. So, we're really open to hear what the Commission has to say.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have suggestions? I would like to let you know that we are a little bit short of Commissioners, and so I'm kind of leaning toward giving these other two Commissioners a chance to at least give you some recommendations maybe later on.
That's fine. Welcome to that.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. Where would you put the barbecues for amenities, for example?
Probably would spread them around the site so that they would be convenient walking access to, you know, the residents. Probably redo some of the areas. Again, we will probably have some changes due to water quality considerations for the current water quality reg, so there probably will be some other open areas that will open up as part of the, the design for water quality purposes. So we would try to incorporate those at strategic locations throughout the site so that it was in close walking distance for the, for the residents, not, not all concentrated at the rec center.
So you're, would you maintain the same number of units that you're showing?
Probably we will end up losing some units as part of the water quality reg changes, and it could well be that the combination of the two would result in some, some loss of units.
So you showed this kind of maxed out, and then you'll tweak it.
Yeah, this was a plan that was, Mr. Wumble had before the county at one time, pre-cityhood, back before the economic downturn. Actually, Mr. Wumble was advised to, by the past county planning director, to buy the second smaller parcel, and did so to incorporate it all together as one project. And then we worked with your staff on going through the general plan process and securing the general plan designation that was consistent with what we had started out with. And also, then we came back some, some months ago and obtained the consistency zoning consistent with your general plan. So it's been sort of a long, probably approaching 10-year process.
So when you, when you mentioned water, is that your idea, or do you feel that you are backed into that?
It's with the, the number of water quality changes, water quality regulation changes that have taken place in the past, I think this was originally scoped in, in 2007. There's been several major changes, I think the most recent of which was January 7th, I think, of this year. So there will be some, I'm assuming, probably quite different water quality best management practice facilities as opposed to what was planned at that time. And we understand that, and so that'll be, that'll be probably the first thing that we do, in addition to meeting with Public Works staff to discuss the, and the city's traffic engineer to discuss the access.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Doty?
I guess the, I mean, I still like the idea of a centralized pool. I guess with 200-plus units, it's still nice to have a pool. I think it'd be nice to have a barbecue areas, like you said, spread out throughout where some of the residents can hang out outside, especially along the Salt Creek. It's just a nice little view area, kind of open space viewing with some wrought iron fence back there.
Right.
Just be a nice little touch back there. You know, reading through Planning's comments, to trying to line, do you think it's possible to line up a driveway with the Rio Vista Drive, or?
We had a prior design that lined up in that location. The problem that it creates for the design of the project, it sort of pushes the drive, the entry all the way into one corner. And so what we'd like to do is to sit down with Public Works staff and, as opposed to past county transportation staff, and see if we can come up with some alternatives with, with regard to the access to the site to where it does sort of solve both, both concerns, our concerns with regard to the site design, and access concerns with regard to both our driveway and surrounding driveways, both to the south, to the south and across the street. So, that's, that's probably be the first thing we do.
Yeah, because it looks like the north and south, are those gated, like emergency knockbox?
Those are gated right now. Right now, it is, it is not a gated project per se, but those are emergency access points.
With the knockbox on them?
That may change, yeah, that may change.
But I mean, just with 200-plus units, I think two access points might be convenient, especially if people are trying to make a left to go north and cut across, it might back up a little bit. And then do you know which way, kind of the natural drainage, I'm just thinking if you line it up with Rancho Vista, you do lose some of that northeast corner.
Basically, everything she flows right now to the corner where the drainage channel on the west side empties into the Salt Creek Channel, the entire site drains to that corner.
So if, they're required to do a traffic study, but they also have to take a look at that future CIP project. So even though we would like to see the driveway to realign with Rio, this is right here, they may have to consider that project because the, I believe, that portion of Bradley might be a little bit elevated. So, it might be a safety.
Over the approach tram going over the creek?
Correct. So it might be a safety concern if you put in the driveway at the end of that bridge.
We will contact you to obtain the plans.
All right.
Thanks, Yolanda. No, let's, we'll, we'll leave this one for now, and then we'll, it's probably going to be redone, so.
Yeah, then I saw the planning had the comment about the driveway widths in the emergency access. I would definitely clean that up, because if you got to go wider, because private roads versus public roads.
Yes, we, it will, it will be a private driveway system.
Okay.
Possibly as a miscommunication. It will be private driveways as opposed to public streets. I'm not aware that the city has a public street standard. It goes down to a 42-foot right away than, than I know of.
No, actually, the narrowest we have is about 48 feet.
Yeah.
So that would be a little bit problematic for us.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, so as long as you reach the, the fire department's minimum width, then you're fine there. Because I was just thinking, when I was reading through the planning comments, I was like, man, if your street's got to get wider, that's going to make you redo the whole site plan, so. And then pay attention, oh, I guess you've read all the notes, but the parallel parking, because it just seems like there's maybe 10, 15 parking spots, so.
And again, with the redesign, and we, we have discussed that from the, the prior design, it could well be that we'll probably incorporate more right in, you know, right angle parking as opposed to parallel parking. Just because most people today don't parallel park very well.
Now they're making cars that do it automatically. That's how bad we've gotten.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And, but I think we can actually yield more parking spaces that way, too, without having to, to go to the parallel spaces, so we are going to take a look at that, too.
And then can staff confirm that the density is within the general plan? From what I read, I think it is. I just want to confirm that.
Correct, it is.
Okay.
Slightly over 13 overall, right now. And like I say, it may change, and it probably will change down.
It'll probably drop with water quality and all that, so. Other than that, I think, you know, here, this site plan, there's not a lot of amenities, but it sounds like you're on the right path of additional little pocket parks with barbecues and picnic benches and little things like that. You know, I think the two entrances would be nice. I think if you do one, there's almost a, you know, a liking of having a signalized intersection, but if your driveways don't line up, that's really going to throw a wrench into it, so. Hopefully, two will create a better circulation for 200-plus units. So, and personally, I would like to see a wrought iron fence along Bradley, some little more visual with some landscaping, and just rather than a masonry block wall that blocks everything.
The only thing that we would, may have an issue with is the, is the, when we do the acoustic studies, we might have to at least have some wall to mitigate for the sound. And if we can keep it as, as not all wall, that would certainly be, you know, a potential. But the acoustic study will dictate what we'd have to do with regard to, you know, wall, because it's a function of height of the wall and setback of the units to the, you know, to the, to the windows, so.
Yeah, no, which is understandable, because Bradley, you know, when I cove or I'm a call from the east side of the freeway, Bradley's the first road I hit to not get on the freeway to come down this side, so. Bradley's a very well-traveled road, so I understand that. But other than that, I, you know, look forward to seeing the new site plan. I mean, obviously, it's going to change quite a bit, but that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. I had two concerns, both of which have, well, one of which have been reflected as far as entrance and exit from that site. I was looking at the number of homes with regards to getting into and out of that site. You have 207 homes there, and I don't think that all of your residents are going to be driving small cars. And I'm just wondering, in the case of an emergency, how all those people are going to get out, that one entrance that I've seen on the plan. I'm more in favor of having at least two entrances that are available to the general public for ingress and egress, and as well as emergency services. My second concern is, are the square footage of those homes, are these going to be condos, or are they going to be attached homes, or are they going to be apartments?
They're all, they're all separate units. There'll be, it will be a condominium map.
Okay.
But they will be detached units, and they will be, they will each have their own yards.
Okay.
So they will not be attached.
Okay. What is the average square foot of the design that you're proposing?
I think this particular, the footprint here in one or two floors is somewhere in the vicinity of about 13, 1300, 1300 square feet up to about 1,700 square feet and change. But that could change.
Okay.
They're all targeted as three-bedroom, so they're basically, they're, they are small starter homes, basically, so.
Will this be controlled by an HOA?
Yes. Have to for the, for the amenities and also the internal driveways, so, yes.
Okay. Now, are you planning on gating this community, or is that up for grabs?
As of right now, it's not, but that we will, that will be taken into consideration with the design. It may well be that if we come up with two access points, it might be better not to gate it as opposed to gating it. So, but we'll make that a determination, probably after we consult with Public Works on the, on the access points.
Okay. Would you consider also cutting down the number of units there?
I think it's, just through the natural progression, it's going to come down somewhat.
Okay.
So I don't know what we'll come back before you with, but it'll be dictated mostly by the water quality provisions, and also the access. If we go to two full access points, it will probably, that alone will probably bring down the, the density a little bit, so. But it will probably drop.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I think you're on track, and we'll be able to see better when you have a landscape plan. Like Commissioner Doty said, the new site plan, it's not for me to tell you how to spend your money, but I would, I would think for that many units, a really nice rec center would go a long way. Otherwise, you're on track, looks good.
Commissioner Doty? I would, I'm, I'm kind of excited about your proposition. I would be looking forward to seeing the new site plans, and I would like for you to retain in your thinking quality of life issues as well as emergency or basically ingress and egress from the site. And as you know, Bradley is a heavily trafficked arterial, and so essentially what you have is just one side for your property for people going on to what is already a heavily congested thoroughfare. And I think that you would want to retain that in your thinking when you discuss the traffic analysis.
Very definitely.
Okay. I would like to see if you can interact with the flood control people to put some nice landscaping around your property, you know, bushes or something, because right now it's just bare dirt.
Flood control version of landscaping is concrete.
Oh, well, we can leave that alone then.
Our side will be landscaped. We will have a landscape buffer that will, that will basically pretty up their, their Salt Creek Channel side of the world. They don't, flood control does not do a whole lot of landscaping.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And we will touch base with Mr. Brady and also the other two Commissioners and get, and gather their input as well, so, thank you very much.
Vice Chair, just to let you know, I do have a speaker slip.
Okay.
Would you like that now?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
How absolutely despicable! 200 more homes in precious little Sun City. Do you want to look like the city of San Diego with plus pollution and trying to deal with their waste in an expensive zero-waste program? All cities should be striving for zero waste, zero water waste, or expanded drain for more housing, stadiums or any other building. Zero coal, oil, what is it?
Could I get your name for the record?
Mrs. Miller. This is just despicable. It's in a total floodplain. It breaks every law, and you all should be fired. That is what sophisticated cities are designing. Obviously, this city can't even control the dangerous streets and dangerous loud trucks and cars that are on La Pedra and going through the Sun City Shopping Center on Cherry Road, gassing their engines. You don't even try to deal with this. This is not the place that we have known for years, the quiet, peaceful, rock gardens of Sun City. You need to work on the behavior of your citizens and the amount of undirected debris that is reusable in the apartments already that you have made here. You are the, your decisions are making the air a disposal site for pollution and GHG gases from developers like this, pulling in these bulldozers, and then the, the cars, it's never going to stop. You can't add more of this to satisfy these terrible developers who already have NASDAQ and golden parachutes. Why are you making them greedier? Why are you making them fulfill what Jesus says? The rich man will never get in heaven. He'll never get through the eye of the needle. You are like a bunch of robots, letting these developers tell you what to do. Are you going to have some barbecues? How absolutely trite and light of what they actually do is dig up the earth with their bulldozers. I don't want to hear any more of this about the seniors in the village, when you run right over them and give them asthma. Those poor people at K-Centeros down the street, all they do is talk about their health disabilities. Quality of life, what do you know about it when you're burying it under a bulldozer blade? You have no focus on the reality of the damage that your decisions and the people that come in here and try to sell you a bunch of trivial activities, don't you ever follow the path? These people are going to take from the forest, take from the mountains, take from the granite, take the open space. For who? Who's moving in here? Foreigners from China and Japan? Not Americans, there aren't any left that could even afford anything you're about to do. No! 200 houses! Retire!
Thank you.
I have one more speaker, sir, if you'd like that.
Okay.
Helen Steinich?
Please, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Helen Steinich, 26821 Ipswich Court, Menifee. I just want to express a concern to the Commission. We're homeowners in that our homes back up to this new property, and there are, we, there are four cul-de-sacs with 32 homes. We belong to an HOA of 224 homes. We bought our home back in 2005, almost at $500,000. And so it's a concern for us to make sure that when the building happens, that we don't really want to see three-story buildings that are going to ruin our view that we purchased when we bought our homes in this area. So that, that is a concern for us. Also, for many years since we've bought our home, we've been trying to have limited access onto Lazy Creek, because it's become a cut-through from Lazy Creek to Marietta Road. And we've tried many times with the city trying to put in any kind of speed bumps or anything. Adding 207 homes on Bradley will create an even more of a cut-through for our community, and so that is a concern to us as well. A lot of the homeowners that live on this, on the Boykin that back up to, to this property, never got any kind of information regarding the workshop, so I'm hoping that as things go forward, that all those homeowners as well will receive notices to know what's going to happen in front of our properties or in, behind our property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, staff, can we check and make sure that those homeowners got notification? Because it said it was notified within 300 feet.
Correct.
From the western boundary, they should have been notified.
Correct. It was notified within 300 feet, and because of the channel, this is the property boundary right here, and because the channel immediately to the west takes up some space there, then that means there's not a lot of the homes on the west side of the channel then that, that are included within that 300-foot radius.
Do we normally contact, like, the local HOA? She, she mentioned that HOA was, they belong to an HOA that's across the channel? Do we normally just send them a courtesy, or is that something that we normally do?
Not by default. We don't send the HOAs as noticing.
Okay.
But that's something as far as, once it becomes a real application for the development, if there's a request by the HOA to be noticed of any future, you know, secret document release or, or public hearing notices, that's something that they can request once it becomes a application.
Application, okay.
Ma'am, can you just make sure the homeowners on the east side of Boykin were at least notified? Can we go back to that Argo map? Because which, because you aren't. There's Boykin, Lander. I see Boy, because I. Right. Oh, so you're one of the, okay.
So she's beyond it.
Yeah, I just want to, because it, I mean, given the creeks, maybe 100 feet wide, plus 100, I mean, I'd like to think that everybody in those cul-de-sacs was notified, so I just want to.
What I, what I would suggest is, and to staff, is that we can certainly increase the notice radius whenever we come back before you with regard to, so we would even start the notice at the, at the western boundary of their parcels as opposed to taking into account the flood control channel. We, we do that quite often with, where there's things like this, where there's something in, in between that would preclude noticing, so we can certainly increase the radius, the radius notice, so, when we come back.
Could you also include the HOA as a matter of course?
My card, and she, I'm more happy to meet with her and, and talk with her and her association, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I guess the only, Yolanda, can you just check? Because I mean, I could definitely see her concern about people cutting through Marietta Road, through that, if we can just take a look at that, or?
Yeah, I actually took some notes, so I'm going to discuss that with our traffic guide.
Yeah, because I can see where people don't want to go to Newport and not necessarily go on the speed limit cutting through there, so. Ma'am, I appreciate you coming up and talking. I mean, it's, it's things like that that, you know,
Yeah.
the staff might not see or recognize, because I mean, traffic's like water. It finds its easiest course from point A to point B, and yeah, and we all sit here and go, oh, well, why wouldn't you go Bradley to Newport, back up to Menifee, but as a resident, you know way better than what we do, so appreciate you speaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other issues to discuss? Like to entertain a motion to close the workshop?
We don't, we don't need a motion if it's closed.
You just adjourned.
Okay.
So we take a break until seven o'clock?
Okay, well. Okay. Well, this workshop is hereby closed and we look forward to getting some updated information from you. Thank you. Good evening. I would like to hereby call the planning commission to order. Madam Secretary, could you call the role?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Here.
And I'll note Commissioner Thomas and Chair Carwin are absent.
Okay, thank you. Will everyone stand and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Raise your hands up your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me be seated. Madam Secretary, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, no, sir, as posted.
Does the commission have any comments pertaining to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to remove consent item 8.1 from the consent calendar.
Okay.
First, we gotta, we have to go through a public comments and approval of meeting minutes before that.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir, I do not.
Let's see. Oh, yes. Do we have any comments pertaining to the minutes or can we get the minutes approved? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
You can just do an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes have been approved. I guess next, do we have any public comments?
No public comments, sir.
Okay.
That moves you to your consent agenda.
Okay. Now, are there, we have the consent items and, and we have a concern there that we would like to have a commission, one of the commissioners decided to pull one of the items. Can we get some elaboration on that?
Councilmember, sorry, Commissioner Doty, you like to pull both items?
Yes, I'd like to pull items 8.1 and 8.2.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
No, at this time, the applicant I've been notified would like to actually continue both of the items to a later date.
Okay.
So, if council, I'm sorry, if the commission desires to do that, you could take a vote to do that if you choose.
Okay, thank you. Can we entertain a vote to continue that item to a, to a date?
Sure. So, we'll need one motion and vote, so we actually need two different motions because it's two different items. So, if one of the commissioners has a motion to continue item 8.1, then we can get going with that.
A motion that we continue 8.1?
Second.
And I'll do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes. That motion has been approved. Can we have a, a motion to pull item 8.2? Am I doing this right?
Just to continue item.
Yeah, continue, rather.
Motion that we continue item 8.2?
Second.
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes. That motion has been approved. Do we have any community development director comments?
None this evening, thank you.
Okay. Any attorney comments?
None this evening.
We have any other discussion items? Well, hearing none, I would like to have an entertainment for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.